It is six o'clock and I call the Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023 City Commission Meeting to Order. Please call the roll when you're ready.
Mayor Hattasol.
Here.
Commissioner Butler.
Here.
Commissioner Motta.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Present.
Mayor, we have four commissioners present. The quorum of three has been met.
Very good. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will begin with some proclamations and starting with National Physicians Assistant Week. Hello, hello. We will turn it over. You guys can introduce yourselves one more time. Okay, very good. Whereas quality and cost-effective and accessible patient-centered health care provided by physicians' assistance contributes to the well-being and quality of life for all patients of Manhattan, Kansas. And whereas PAs are academically and clinically prepared medical professionals who diagnose illness, develop and manage treatment plans, and often serve as a patient's principal healthcare provider. And whereas PAs are often the first point of contact for many patients and play a vital role in helping them understand their medical needs and empower them to become effective advocates for their own health. And whereas a valuable asset to the medical team, PAs enhance the delivery of high-quality health care for patients, often in medically underserved and rural areas. And whereas PAs have earned the respect of the general public for their dedication and contributions to people's lives and for their commitment to team-based care and ensure delivery of effective and efficient healthcare services. Now therefore, I mark Hattasol, the mayor of the city of Manhattan, to hereby proclaim October 6th through 12th as National Physicians Assistant Week throughout Manhattan and encourage all our residents to recognize PAs for the significant impact that they have made and continue to make in healthcare as a critical part of the healthcare team. Here we go. Let me get this out of the way. Thank you very much. There you go. Come on over and say a few words if you'd like. Introduce yourselves.
So my name's Amy Fitzgerald. I'm the academic director at the Kansas State PA Program. And I lost count, but I think 32-year PA in the state of Kansas. So we're proud. This is our National PA Week and it's recognized throughout the country as when our profession started in the mid-sixties. And this is Simeon.
Hi, my name's Simeon Seiler. I am a first-year student here at our new program. And I'm also the student body president. So we just wanted to come and say thank you for your community support as well. Obviously, this is a symbiotic relationship. And when you guys support us, we come back and our plan is to support the community. So thank you all very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Next up is Mental Health in Construction Day. Who we have? All right. Alyssa. Very good. All right, come on over here and I'll read it and then I'll give it to you and you can comment. Wow, that's small print. Okay. Whereas the construction industry workers brave extreme weather conditions, work tirelessly and often shoulder the weight of immense responsibility to build the infrastructure that sustains our society. And whereas construction laborers are also at a greater risk of suicide than other professions. And according to the Centers for Disease Control, the rate of suicide among male construction workers is four times higher than the general population. And whereas 2012 and 2013 National Violent Death Reporting System data from 17 states indicates the major occupational group with the highest male suicide rate was construction and extraction, yep, extraction. And whereas according to the 2020 report from the CDC, the construction industry has the second-highest suicide rate out of all major industries in the U.S. And whereas a 2020 survey of construction workers found that 14.3% of workers struggled with anxiety and nearly 6% struggled with depression based on symptoms or medication use. And whereas the Associated General Contractors of Kansas and its partners have created the Kansas Construction Safety Network to help promote mental health in the construction industry. And whereas the Kansas Construction Safety Network has created a website, www.ksc建 safety network dot com, that provides resources associated with drug abuse and mental health and is accessible by the general public and the business community. And whereas the construction companies of the Manhattan area representing Kansas' commercial, industrial, residential, and utility construction contractors and their employees have engaged the following public partners, public-private partners, the Kansas Occupational Safety and Health Administration, OSHA, the Kansas Mental Health Association, Pawnee Mental Health, and Katy's Way. And whereas the Kansas construction industry is proud to work in partnership with the above public agencies in bringing attention to the critical challenges associated with mental health in the community. Now therefore, I mark Hattasol, the mayor of the city of Manhattan, to hereby declare October 18th, 2023 as Mental Health in Construction Day in the city of Manhattan and invite all residents of Riley County and the surrounding area to join the construction industry as we bring recognition to mental health in the construction industry. Alyssa, you want to, here you go.
I'm Melissa Bautwell. And on behalf of, I'm going to go look at my notes. On behalf of the Associated General Contractors of Kansas, I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, for this proclamation. It is an honor for us to have October 18th, 2023, be proclaimed as Mental Health Day in construction for Manhattan. We would like to extend a personal invitation to each of you here in attendance and to the general public to this mental health event, standing up together to promote mental health in construction. And it will be held on October 18th at 11:00 a.m. This will be located in the Shamrock Zone at the Bill Snyder Family Stadium. Again, this event is open to the public. It is not just for construction, even though that is the focus. I have brought some flyers and I can put on the back table if anybody cares to pick it up as a reminder. Thank you again for this community support. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Next up is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a widespread public health problem impacting all demographics in Manhattan, Kansas. And whereas perpetrators of domestic violence use illegal and legal behaviors and tactics that undermine the victim's sense of self, free will, and safety. And whereas domestic violence can have profound lifelong impacts on victims' health, opportunity, and well-being. And whereas one in four women and one in 10 men in the United States have experienced sexual violence, physical violence, or stalking by an intimate partner. And the KBI reports one domestic violence murder occurs every 11 days, nine hours, and 45 minutes in Kansas. Whereas across the United States, many leaders and organizations have displayed their commitment to ending domestic violence, and we must devote ourselves to protect vulnerable and at-risk members of our community. Whereas we remind victims of domestic violence that they are not alone and that free and confidential services are available by calling the Crisis Center, Inc., 24/7 hotline at 1-800-727-2785, or the Kansas Crisis Hotline at 1-88363-2287. Now therefore, I mark Hattasol, the mayor of the city of Manhattan, to hereby proclaim October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Manhattan, Kansas, and urge all citizens to become more aware of domestic violence and the services available for victims. There you go. Come on over.
Thank you, Mayor and commissioners, for declaring the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. My name is Kathy Ray. I'm the executive director of the Crisis Center. This is Tycel Jones, our director of outreach and engagement. And we wanted to take the opportunity this evening to just share a little bit about some of the things we have going on this month. We know that domestic violence impacts our community members all year long. And October is really the time for us to talk about it and spread the word that there are services available. And as the proclamation mentioned, the Crisis Center provides those free and confidential services. And I think it's easy to hear those stats, those national stats, or even the Kansas Bureau of Investigation stats, but not really realize how much it happens right here in Manhattan. We've had several murders within the last couple of years related to domestic violence. And that's why the Crisis Center is here. We're here to provide those safety services. So I just want to share, last year, on our 24/7 crisis hotlines, we answered 2,832 calls. We recently built a bigger safe shelter because our old safe shelter was not large enough to meet the need. And we have since more than doubled the amount of bed nights we are providing in our safe shelter. And that's a place people can come as safe haven to escape the abuse and violence in their home. And last year, we provided 5,808 bed nights in our safe shelter. So as you can see, this is an issue that impacts all of us. I want to just mention a couple of things we have going on to raise awareness in the community. On October 11th, next week, we will have a silent witness ceremony from noon to 1:00, so over the lunch hour, in the Riley County Courthouse Plaza. And the silent witnesses are life-size silhouettes of our community members, people who have lost their lives to domestic violence. And so we will gather on October 11th from noon to 1:00 to remember the true impact this has on our community. And then just another event, that's a national event for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, is Purple Thursday. And, because purple is the awareness color for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So hopefully, everybody has some purple they can wear on October 19th and join in that. And that's really the way to show support for victims and survivors. And then have them reach out to us if you know someone who needs help. Thank you so much.
All right. And last proclamation. Jake, come on up here. Something near and dear to my heart. National Chiropractic Health Month. Okay. Whereas about 20% of the adults in the United States, one in five experience chronic pain, which is lasting, which is pain lasting more than three months. And whereas new cases of chronic pain occur more frequently among adults than other cases of, than new cases of other common chronic conditions such as diabetes and high blood pressure. And whereas in the United States, musculoskeletal conditions, a common cause of chronic pain, result in more than 130 million healthcare visits annually, making them the number-one reason people avail themselves to their doctors. Whereas low back pain, which ranks among the most common forms of chronic pain, has been one of the leading reasons why people are prescribed opioids. And the number of people worldwide living with back pain is projected to increase by 36% to 43 million over the next 30 years. And whereas according to the CDC, one in four patients who receive prescription opioids long-term for non-cancer pain struggle with addiction. Whereas the American College of Physicians Low Back Treatment Guidelines promote the use of non-invasive, non-drug approaches, such as spinal manipulation, as a first line of defense against back pain before the use of pain meds and surgery. And whereas the CDC's 2022 Clinical Practice Guidelines for Prescribing Opioids promotes diverse approaches and varied pain management solutions, and specifically encourages non-opioid pharmacological therapies as a first line of treatment against subacute and chronic pain. Whereas doctors of chiropractic play a key role in helping patients manage pain and lessen their reliance on prescription pain meds with their evidence-based, patient-centered, non-drug approach. Whereas with the theme Chiropractic Relieve, Restore, Resume, National Chiropractic Health Month, this reminds citizens of Manhattan that non-drug treatments for low back pain, neck and joint pain, such as spinal manipulation and other chiropractic services, can help relieve pain and restore joint function, helping people to resume their lives and activities that matter most. Now therefore, be it resolved that I mark Hattasol, mayor of the city of Manhattan, officially joins with the American Chiropractic Association in proclaiming the month of October as National Chiropractic Health Month, and reminds all citizens of the importance of making good health decisions. Jake?
Hi, I'm Jake Pirtle. I'm a doctor of chiropractic here with Alternative Healthcare in Town. We just want to thank Mayor Hattasol and the commissioners for recognizing the chiropractic profession as a whole and the KCA, the chiropractic, or the Kansas Chiropractic Association. Chiropractic can be really beneficial for anybody looking for pain relief, general motion, or just overall health. So we appreciate it. And we look forward to helping serve this community. Thank you.
All right, very good. All right. Being that this is the first legislative meeting of the month, now is the time for open public comment. This would be for items that are not on the agenda this evening. The commission will not discuss or debate these items or make decisions about things brought up, but we will take everything under advisement and respond perhaps later. Does anybody care to comment? You'll have up to five minutes and you can speak one time on items that are not on this evening's agenda. Gary? State your name, sign in. I think you already signed in. State your name, address.
Do I need to turn that?
I got it on. Oh, point it toward you a little bit more.
Good evening, commissioners. As you know, my name is Gary Olz. I live at 3308 Frontier Circle. And I seem to be a broken record here many, many, many times. I appreciate the fact that you'll take my comments under advisement because they're just general comments. I have eight things to cover and not much time. First off, I want to tell you a quick story. I've lived here about 30 years this time around, and I know that many of you have lived many years. And I try to make a point anytime I meet a parent of a student at Kansas State University. I take just a moment and say, "Thank you. Thank you for your contribution," whether it's rent or whether it's purchasing stuff. "Thank you for your contribution to the city of Manhattan." And that's the chuckle I get, Linda, oftentimes, without a doubt. I want to take a second and thank you for the reduction in the mill levy, the reduction in the overall property tax, as I understand it, is somewhere of the ones, of the amount you control, is about 2.6% increase. I know RCPD you don't control and the library board you don't control. It's just a carry-through. So I just want to compliment you on a great job. And I want to remind the citizens that in less than 30 days, we have an election coming up. And that election's very important because it's going to track the future of which direction the city of Manhattan, or should I say, the city commission will go. Will it continue to be fiscally conservative, or will it move the other direction? With regards to that, I want to make my, oh, I don't know, semi-annual comment about the RCPD budget. I really have high expectations that this commission, along with the county commission, will get their act together and change the policy so that everyone who is on the RCPD board is an elected official, because we have no recourse to remove you other than the elections when you're allowing significant police department increases that are just, in my mind, unbelievable. But then again, I don't know all the details, not nearly as much as you do. My third comment has to do with, I would ask that you, once again, at some point in a work session, or at some point, I don't know what that would be, maybe after a new commission is sworn in, that you would take a minute and have a discussion on why do you limit general public comments to only 12 times a year? I got to make a point to be here at the first meeting of every month to make my comments. Things not on the agenda. That's not what I'm talking about. But I think it's important that we do have that dialogue with you all on 24 occasions, if at all possible. I assume there are two legislative sessions during the month, and I could be wrong on that. But if they're right, I would ask you to talk about it, either with the new commission or this commission, and think about it. Is it really that much of a hardship to have someone step up for five minutes or less? It would be if everyone in this room stepped up. I understand that. But come on, unless it's a critical social issue or something like that, that normally doesn't happen. Another comment I want to make is in regards to, Kansas State University has a very ambitious goal, as I understand it, to increase by 50% by 2030. I don't remember what year it is. That's not important. But I want you, as you know, because you've already here looked at this or thought about this, but everyone else needs to think about this. That's a very admirable goal. 10,000 new students. Now I realize some will be in Olathe, some will be in Salina, some will be online. But let's just say that 3,000 come to Manhattan and they live here. Folks, you think Manhattan is expensive now for housing. Wow. This commission and future commissions needs to address through zoning or whatever. On this agenda, there is some zoning issues with regards to land. You got to find a way to allow more housing to be built, because it's a simple combination that we all learned long ago, supply and demand. We have the demand for housing chasing, chasing, chasing the supply for housing. And the supply is low and the demand is high. And rents are just going to go up and up and up. 60% of every dwelling in this community, as I understand it, according to the census, is a rental dwelling. And I grant it, you want more home ownership. I agree with that. But unless we figure out a way to help developers develop properties, not necessarily way out here in the Holbert Hills area, that's an important element, without a doubt. But any infill that can be done, anything that can be done anywhere of land that's available, to be able to build something, even if it's small places. I don't know anything about tiny homes, but you hear about it. And I'm sure there's all kinds of objections to it. I don't understand it. But the reality is, in 20 seconds that I have left to speak, is that you have, or we have, as a community, a problem in the future. And K-State, great institution, and I admire them for going the distance to try to increase enrollment, but it's going to really impact the students and non-students alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Olz? Anybody else on non-agenda items care to comment? All right, we will close the pre-for-all public comment and move into the consent agenda, which are items of a routine or housekeeping nature.
Mayor?
Oh, crap, I missed that line. Okay, sorry. We will move on to commissioner comments.
It's easy to jump at that one.
Nope, that's fine. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Morris?
I would just, I just want to report that I attended a meeting, Jared Wassinger and I, with the university administration for the International Town and Gown Group. And we reaffirmed the importance of our working together and communicating with each other, that, and built purposely, building relationships. And the strongest speaker to that was Derek Jackson, Vice Provost, President for Housing, for sure, and Housing and Dining, I know. But I think he's doing a lot more than that now. And I'm not, I don't know the big, long title he has now. But, and we also talked about the ATA bus system and funding it, and that K-State has had to pull back some funding. And therefore, we can't serve the entire community in the rich way that we have in the past. So we're looking at, you know, just ways to make sure we communicate well. And I met the student body leadership. And, you know, they're elected each, I think, February or February and March. And I knew two of them already, because they had been active in past years. But we talked about housing also, off-campus housing. And one of the students, Bentley, had been to, went to the International ITGA Conference. And it really opened her eyes about the need for campuses and cities and communities to work together. And so I just want to make sure we emphasize and underscore that. The, another subject, the local mental health sysis, local mental health system assessment, sponsored by the Flint Hills Wellness Coalition, is going to take place on Tuesday, October 10th. There are two times, either from 12:00 to 2:00, or from 6:00 to 8:00. And there's a snack or a lunch provided with each one. It's going to be at Potteroff Hall at Seco Park. And we're going to talk about the strengths and weaknesses of the mental health system in Riley County and how it can be improved. And mental health is on so many of our minds with regard to the professions we have, the students in our school system, the teachers, people who work under a lot of pressure. And so everybody's trying to, tripping over ourselves, actually, trying to solve that. So I'd like to just make, invite you, I think it's worth, terribly worthwhile to talk about it. I just came from, Riley County Police Department is hosting in City Park over at the pavilion. They're hosting the, I think it's Community Night Out, from 5:00 to 7:00 this evening. And I hope that a lot of parents take their kids and they can sit in and get in the ambulances and the police cars and the fire engines. And it's a great time to explore that, especially new member, new people in our community, even grown-ups who are new. If you haven't done that, I think it's, it's kind of eye-opening and actually talk to the staff. So please do that. It's worthwhile. Your continuing education. At least I need that kind of refresher every few years. So, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Motta?
I'd just like to thank Gary Olz for his comments. Just to clarify some, the city budget for 24, the amount of money coming in for property tax, is going to go up 2.9%. That's after, even though the police department is going up 6.5, the library up 6, the city is basically covering those costs to bring down the total rate, including the police department and the library, to 2.9. That means the city is actually going to bring in 365,000 less in revenue next year in order to get down to that 2.9 number. So I just wanted to say that, that the city commission is trying to keep Manhattan affordable with doing that. And also, we're in, say, some of our strongest financial position in years with the amount that we have in reserve. So it's something that we could do to give back to the community.
Lynn, you got anything?
Yeah, so I just want to thank city staff, public works, for chopping all the weeds down on city property along Fort Riley Boulevard. Because, of course, Mike Dodson was concerned about it. I think the Mercury wrote an article about it. And at least the city part is taken care of. Now, everybody else that owns private property hasn't bothered to cut that down. You can see where they mowed the grass and you got three-foot weeds sticking out. And I know a lot of people are concerned. It makes the community look bad. But, you know, the individuals that own the property, that's on them. They need to cut that stuff. But good work on the part of the city crews for getting out there and cleaning all that out. Appreciate it.
All right. I don't have anything to add, so we will move on to the consent agenda now. And so everything else I said earlier still applies. Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments, items that you want to poll for full discussion? Well, we'll, while we're pondering it, we'll come back to the comments if we need and open it up for public comment on items on the consent agenda only. We've got some flats and some budget stuff, and contracts, and a couple of appointments. If not, we will close the public comment on the consent agenda. And is there any other discussion or someone want to make a motion?
I think Jason had it mentioned on K-Man this morning about the plan for reconstructing the Seth Child Road and Wreath Avenue, and when the Roundabout at Grandmere would open, and maybe more information about Hayes Drive. I just think those are good, and from every opportunity, we need to update the public.
Yeah, we're going out for design services for Anderson Avenue between Seth Child and Wreath. We had covered that in our briefing session a couple of weeks ago. And I know a few of you were happy to see that happening. It's a rough, rough patch of road that we need to look at a final design and potentially a contract next year to improve that. We've put out updates here within the last few days on the Roundabout at Grandmere and Kimball. We'll be closing that stretch of Kimball scenic for about a week so we can connect all the lanes into the Roundabout. So that, that'll occur here in the next few days. And then Hayes Drive, Brian or Rob, I don't know if you have an update. I think we've given out some information. But if you could chime in here, I'd appreciate it.
I'd love to. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. Brian Johnson, city engineer. Hayes Drive will be closed probably for another 60 days or so. We actually have a meeting with the Corps of Engineers this week to talk about that extended closure. As Jason said, Roundabout, we're going to be closing Grandmere Parkway for about a week and a half as we do those final tie-ins. And then also, Dennison, north of Kimball, by the fire station, will be a little small section there that'll close come Monday. And that closes for about six weeks. So we do have some closures coming up. We put them on our website. We have every single verbal message board sign that we own out right now. So if you want to rent some, we're looking for some. But that's kind of the updates.
So we would be safe in telling the Northview area that Hayes Drive would be open by the end of the year?
Until I hear it from the Corps on Thursday, I really hate to speculate.
I know. You said 60 days, so I was stretching it further.
That's our hope. That's our hope. We're going to get some more information on Thursday.
Okay, cool.
And then we'll get a notice out over via our website. And then we'll get a notice out over via our website.
Sorry to hassle you, but
That's okay. Thank you.
It's getting long. And it's been wonderful contractor weather. We've been in a drought.
It has. And that's why the Roundabouts, we anticipated the Roundabout closing again about December, and we're closing it in October, which is really good.
Yeah.
And even Dennison. We thought Dennison would probably be Thanksgiving or so, and we're ahead of schedule. So unless, unless we get into a rainy season, we're making pretty good progress on a lot of our projects.
Good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, or is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as of
Was there a second?
A second.
As distributed.
All right. Please, there's been a motion to accept the consent agenda, and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
All right. We will move on to the general agenda, and the first item is a rezoning of lots two to four, MP addition, Unit Two, from IL Light Industrial District to ICS Industrial Commercial Service District. Stephanie?
Good evening. Is it on? It's on. Okay. Good evening. Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. The first item for you this evening is a rezoning request of lots two, three, and four of MP addition. It is generally located at the intersection of McCall and Kretschmer Drive. The rezoning request is to take the subject property that you see here from IL Light Industrial to ICS Industrial Commercial Services. The impetus behind that rezoning request really has to do with lot coverage. In the IL District, you can only have 40% of that lot covered by a building. ICS, that goes up to 50%. That would accommodate a spec building that is proposed on this northern section of the tract. The future land use map, it shows this entire area as being industrial. However, if we scroll right back up to the current zoning, a lot of this PUD is actually commercial. So our future land use map has deviated over the years as the McCall corridor is built out. ICS is a really good kind of inter, or in-between of industrial and community commercial. So it would be appropriate with, based on the comprehensive plan. This did go before the Planning Board, September 14th. The Board unanimously recommended approval of this, and there weren't any comments from the public or from the Board. I will stand for any questions you all may have.
Any questions of Steph?
As I look at the map, and I look at the McCall's building, it looks like it's in four quarters. Is that just the way they added on, but it's not, it's nothing for the future?
Yes. So the, there's four different lots.
Within, just the building, was what I was thinking.
Oh, here?
Yeah.
I cannot speak to how, it used to be McCall pattern. I can't speak to how they built onto that over the years.
Because I think that is the materials that we have. I appreciated the thorough examination.
Oh, and Barry's staff report.
Yeah. Because I didn't have many questions.
Okay, great.
I did have a question about stormwater, but then I realized that the building footprint hasn't changed. And so it's not, there's not going to be a big change at all. But I do know that, you know, our floodplain has changed a lot over the years since McCall's was first built, so.
Yeah, we, the last item I have for you this evening, I was going to go into a little bit more detail of when we do our in-depth analysis on drainage and on traffic impact. I can go ahead and do that now, or I can wait. It's really whatever the, the commission would like to have.
We can wait. I'd rather
Yeah, we'll just hang on for a little bit.
Talk about it. And down at the bottom of the lot, there's a yellow rectangle down there. Is that going to be a separate lot eventually developed separately, probably?
If the commission approves the first reading of the ordinance, next week you would see a replat of this property. To my knowledge, this would not be altered at all. What will end up happening is this northern lot line would be shifted to accommodate a future building up here. So to my knowledge, this independent lot here would stay.
Okay. But not be developed separately, is, that was my question?
Not at this point, no.
Okay. Not at this point. Okay. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Well, we'll go ahead and open up a public hearing on this rezoning. Please come forward, state your name, your address, and you'll have up to five minutes to comment on it. If you'd like. If you don't like, we'll close public comment and move on to any other last questions, or you want to, is your discussion going to be on this too, on this same motion? I didn't catch what her question was initially about the
It's when we do our stormwater analysis or any kind of detention. It typically doesn't happen at rezonings, but I think the last item we have, that might be a more appropriate time to talk about it, given some of the concerns I think you'll hear tonight.
Okay, we'll wait then.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments, or does someone like to make a motion?
I move we approve first reading of an ordinance, rezoning lots two, three, and four of MP addition, Unit Two, from IL Light Industrial District to ICS Industrial Commercial Services District, based on findings in the staff report and recommendation by the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the rezoning. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
All right. We will move on to item two, which is request to annex a tract of land adjacent to the Henry addition, Lot Three.
Yes, I will not repeat that since you just introduced the item. The location generally is in the northwest part of our community. Taking a closer look, this is Lot Three of Henry addition. It's kind of at the southern and western terminus of Victory Drive. The, the request for annexation, excuse me, is a small triangle that you see here. Again, the, how we kind of got to this point, there's going to be a single-family home that is constructed on Lot Three. The driveway is already poured, and when the driveway was poured, a portion of it came across this piece of land right here, this tract, that was not annexed into the city and was not part of Lot Three. So the cleanest way to, to move forward would be to annex, rezone, and ultimately replat, so that this triangle can be a part of Lot Three where the driveway is. This went to Planning Board on September 14th, unanimously approved, or recommended for approval by the Planning Board. No comments from the public or the Board members on this item.
All right. The Commission, any questions for Stephanie on this? All right. Thank you for now. We'll open up a public comment on this request to annex that small triangular piece of land. Please come forward, state your name, sign in. You have up to five minutes. If not, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion or ask any other questions.
I move we approve first reading of an ordinance, annexing approximately .07 acre tract of land, generally located adjacent to the northwestern boundary of the Manhattan City Limits, at the southwestern terminus of Victory Drive into the city limits.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve this request to annex. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Next item, we will consider a request to rezone a tract of land adjacent to the Henry addition, Lot Three, from Riley County AG Ag District to City of Manhattan RL Low Density Residential District.
All right, same lot. Now we're talking rezoning. We know the location. It's the same triangle. The current rezoning is, or the current zoning is Riley County Ag, and the applicant is seeking to rezone it to RL Single Family Residential. That is what the, the current Lot Three is zoned as well. It's consistent with our future land use map that calls for this area to be low, medium-density residential. Also went to Planning Board September 14th. No comments from the, the public or the Board, and the vote was seven zero on this item.
All right. Any questions for Stephanie? All right. We will open the public hearing and public comment for this request to rezone that piece of land we just annexed a second ago. If anybody would like to come forward and comment, you have five minutes. State your name and address. All right. I will close the public comment and ask for a motion or other discussion from the Commission.
It seems to make sense. I mean, this is like, you know, pretty simple with the driveway and that. So I move that we approve first reading of an ordinance, rezoning an approximate .07 acre tract of land, generally located adjacent to northwest boundary of the Manhattan City Limits, at the southwestern terminus of Victory Drive, from Riley County AG Agricultural District to City of Manhattan RL Low Density Residential District, based on findings in the staff report and recommended by the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this rezoning of the land we just annexed. Please call the roll.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Great. Item D, and last one, we will consider a request to rezone lots one through five of Chavie's addition, from Low Density Residential to Low Density Residential Attached. Stephanie?
Yes, the last item I have for you this evening, the rezoning of Chavie's, which is located in the northeast part of our community, between Casement Road and Spain Drive. Taking a closer look at the five lots that are requested to be rezoned, only one of them has been developed over, well, the house that is currently on this lot here was developed in 19, or was built in 1925. It has two accessory dwelling units on it. Most of the, the other surrounding homes were built in the 80s, 90s, and most recently in the early 2000s. But for the last two decades, this, the other four lots of this have remained undeveloped. And looking at our zoning map, it's currently zoned RL. The applicant is requesting to, for the zoning, RLA, Single Family Attached Residential. The RLA District would allow still a single-family detached home, as the RL District does, but it would allow up to a five-unit townhome. So that would include kind of anything between those, those two types of dwelling units. As you see, there's already RLA in this neighborhood, both immediately to the south and about 300 feet there to the north, as well as a, kind of a good mix of housing types and options in this neighborhood, including some RM. So this PUD here, while it's zoned PD, if we were to convert that over into a standard zoning district, it would be RM. These are anywhere between six and seven-unit townhomes. Again, for RLA, the, the max is five, and that's why it bump, would bump into that RM district. The future land use map does call for this to be low to medium-density residential. RLA is consistent with the, the comprehensive plan there. And I'm going to jump back up to this slide as we walk through a couple of things. This went to Planning Board on September 14th. The, the Board did unanimously recommend approval of this item. However, there were several comments from the public that night. A lot of those were concerning existing drainage and stormwater issues of the area. It is relatively flat. Some of the other concerns brought up were in regard to the amount of traffic on Casement Road. That kind of leads us to what Commissioner Morse had brought up earlier of when staff does the analysis as far as drainage and traffic impact studies. When it comes to rezoning, we look at a very high level. We don't have a development plan yet. We don't know if the developer is going to put in single-family homes, if they're going to do duplexes, if they're going to do townhomes. We don't really even know where that access is going to be right now. All of that comes at plating. So what we do during a rezoning is we look at kind of the more intense use that could happen on this site for, so for in this instance, it would be five-unit townhomes. That would provide the most amount of dwelling units on this site. And then we do a calculation to see how many trips would be generated from those, those five-unit townhomes. We know that, and it was written out in the staff report, we know that Casement, I think it was around 348 trips at maximum that could be generated from this development. Casement could easily handle that increase in traffic. It's built typically to handle, if it's an arterial, between 10,000 and 15,000 cars a day, so that, that increase of 300 would be a minimal change to it. One of the other things I wanted to mention was just to give you an idea of what could happen on this site today. So it's zoned RL. If the developer, or if the applicant wished to, he could come in and replat, and probably replat this into about 22 single-family lots. Wouldn't have to do any, any sort of rezoning. They are seeking the RLA District, which, which gives them the flexibility to look at other types of housing options. As they, as they stated in their application, having that greater density allows the infrastructure cost to kind of be spread over more units, in theory lowering the cost of that housing. On this lot, under RLA, it could be 18 duplex structures, so two units in each of those structures, or it could be, kind of the maximum would be about nine five-unit townhomes. Of course, there could be any mix of, of those units on here. It's really whatever the, the applicant wishes at the time of, of plating. I'm going to pause there and see if there's any questions or points of clarification.
So what's the deal with that strip of land just above the red, but below the houses on?
This right here?
Yeah. Is that, that, is that land wasted, or is that?
There, there are two lots. There's a home on each of them. So there's one home that's right here, and then there's another one that's over here.
And that land in between is divided between those two?
Nope. The, so this lot right here actually goes all the way over to here.
Wow.
So it's just a long, skinny lot.
And that would be a good time to buy that and add it to the contiguous thing, and I'm sure they've looked at that. I would hope they've looked at that, because otherwise that land is going to be totally wasted, and you could put three or four houses on that.
Yeah, I can't speak to that. Josh Brewer, who's the applicant, he's supposed to be joining us on, on Zoom tonight. He would be able to, to speak to any conversations that they may have had of additional land.
Okay. Any other questions up to this point? All right. If you've got more? Nope.
Nope. Unless you have any questions for me, or want clarification on any items.
I think Stephanie has said that
Microphone. Microphone, microphone.
Mentioned that traffic access and drainage, those are my two concerns, and that will come at the plating stage.
Correct.
Northview, this area doesn't drain well, so it's got to be, there has to be an accommodation, you know, a, a plan. It has to be built into the plan. It can't be ignored. And access, I would like to see two, if we're going to put, like, the maximum is 45, or there would have to be two access points to something that dense, for safety, for fire, kinds of access, so that there's no delay in responding. But I, I know that this is an infill situation. Land has been sitting there. I moved to Northview in 1974, so I've been in Manhattan a long time, and the area has been developing in stages around this, and not regarding this land at all. But it would be a logical next step, but I think it's important that we get it right, so whatever that is.
So there's potential of three access points, east, west, south, on Hall's Landing there?
Potentially. Again, we would have to, to look at kind of their layout, and then work with Public Works to make sure we have enough clearance between driveways, and I think we're, it's going to be an interesting site to, to kind of work with some of the drainage challenges, as well as the transportation connection. But from what we're seeing now, it, yeah, we could have potentially up to three different access points.
There are already access points on Spain Drive and on, and other on Casement. So it's not like creating new ones. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Stephanie?
Maybe there's not on Spain.
Yeah, I don't think there's
That's where that house is, isn't it? Up there north of the red line?
Yes, this is the driveway for this house.
But that house won't, isn't affected by this?
Nope.
Okay.
And this right here is the turnaround for the Fire Department, because Hall's Landing was a little too long to just have the, the one egress point.
Okay. All right. We will throw this open for public comment on this item to rezone those lots. If anyone care to comment, please come forward, state your name, address, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Mayor, we did have the applicant, I think, sorry, on Zoom, if you wanted to
Hold that thought just a second. Is it Josh? Are you the one there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, a little bit. Somebody turn it up a little bit more. Do you have anything that you'd like to add right away here?
Yes, just that I do want to, this is Josh Brewer with the Manhattan Area Habitat for Humanity. We are the applicant, and I do want to clarify that we do not own the land here. We are applying for a RLA upzoning, because as Stephanie said, we would like to see some flexibility in approaching this project, which is a, I think, a rare opportunity that we have to that we have to, um, possibly get an infill, uh, housing development, uh, across the line that's affordable to these workforce families that we talk so much about creating homeownership opportunities for. In, in our public engagement, um, with the neighbors, we've heard three primary concerns. Um, as Stephanie alluded to, there are concerns about stormwater, there are concerns about traffic, and then there's a general feeling that nothing should be built on this property ever. On the first two comments, I want to echo, uh, the neighbors that we've heard from, that these are real concerns that they see every day living in the neighborhood, and, and I would strongly advocate that the city, um, engage, engage this neighborhood more, um, so that, you know, we can, we can try to address some of these stormwater issues and, and traffic issues that, um, that they've communicated to us. On the third piece, um, we reject the idea that we're going to sit by and, and allow a plot to be undeveloped, um, when it matches the, the neighborhood to the south. We held our, our public meeting there on Hall's Landing, and it's a, it's a wonderful neighborhood, uh, that the neighbors clearly enjoy living in. I know Commissioner Morse lives there, or lives, uh, nearby on Spain, and, and we really think that this is a, a wonderful, uh, set of neighborhoods, and we would, we would love to see some additional houses here. Um, and so, uh, i- if it is, if we can, i- if we can achieve the upzoning here, uh, we think that there may be a chance for this project to pencil out. Um, we don't know any specifics on this, but we would, we would sure like to figure out if it's possible.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Uh, stay tuned. Okay, go ahead and state your name and address, and we'll begin public comment, and then we'll see if Josh needs to comment some more when we're done.
My name is Terry Rimple, and I live at twenty-two-ten Casement Road, uh, which is the lot, the long property that you were talking about?
Okay.
And, um, as, as been stated, drainage is a problem. Uh, when the lots on the north side of our property were developed, they were required to put in a drainage ditch to drain the water to Spain, uh, Spain. And, um, they put in, uh, a ditch that was two feet wide and about three inches deep, uh, and, which was, and also it was above our property. So, uh, what the water does is actually go across that and into our property. So drainage is a problem, and if this is approved, we would really appreciate it if you guys made sure that they put in adequate, not just cosmetic drain, drainage. Another issue is, um, the traffic, um, and you're talking about, uh, Hall's Landing. Have you ever been on Hall's Landing? It's about this wide. Um, it, there's not room for two cars to travel that at the same time. Um, there's parking on that, and actually, the houses on Hall's Landing, even though it's RLA, are pretty nice. I mean, they have a nice yard, uh, there's lots of room for kids to play, uh, but if they develop, uh, this property like they, like we think they're going to, there will not be any room, uh, not any yard, and we believe there will be, uh, cars up and down whatever street they put in there, um, because there won't be enough parking for the, the residents of these, probably, these buildings. So I really hope that it stays RL, and I know you guys want to put it in RLA, but I just had to come up here and tell you I would, uh, I know there are going to be houses in there, but I, RL would be my preference. And also, um, you might have to think about the health of the community, uh, because when you're putting people in such tight situations, it's not really good for a cohesive community, because, especially with no outside room. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, I, good night.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, come on up, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes also.
I'm Carol Machero at one-twenty-seven Knox Lane. We do have a drainage problem, I just will reiterate that. Um, and like I said before, it got worse after, um, Knox, um, Circle went in. There's just nowhere for the water to go. It'd be nice to get that figured out. Um, the drainage, um, ditch behind, north of my property, has never been looked into, um, ever since I've lived there, since ninety-two. Don't know what that's going to bring about when this all comes through.
Where do you live again, Carol?
Knox Lane.
Pardon? Where on Knox Lane? Where, where on Knox Lane? Where do you live?
One-twenty-seven, the big blue country, blue house.
Okay.
Just across from the trailer park.
Yes, okay, thank you. I was trying to place it. Thank you.
Um.
But you said there's a drain behind, on the north side of your house?
I was told that's what it is. There's a, there is a ditch thing there, um, if you look just north of my property, um, on the other, on this place that, where they're going to be, um, doing the new di- new, uh, housing thing. Um, there is a small little ditch there. It's not cleaned out, but there is a ditch there. It's well-filled. It needs attention ever since I've lived there. It is on a flood plain, I want to reiterate that. We all are on a flood plain. I've never heard any mention about that, but any time when I even purchased the property before, when I was looking for a property to buy, they said about not, um, you know, building in certain areas, so I do want to reiterate that. I looked at some of these, uh, dimensions that were given on one of the handouts, and, uh, minimum side setbacks and so forth. One of them, um, on some places, say, six feet. Well, that gives no opportunity to put any type of a shed, obviously, as you all are aware of. I was wondering, uh, did anybody apply for special type of arrangements? And I noticed on the approval of this thing tonight, um, did anybody apply for special arrangements of special, um, property, um, you know, size of a property align, you know, sizes? Has that been established? I mean, it said.
We'll, we'll try to answer your, your comments when we're done, when you're done talking, so we don't take up your time.
Okay, it said low-density. What kind of low-density are we talking here? How many exact properties are we talking, and what kind of sizes are we talking about? Nobody seems to give any type of exact numbers or sizes. It would really be nice to know exactly what we're getting into, so that we as a community have a good feeling about it. It makes us in the dark, and people don't like to be in the dark when we're talking what's coming about our way, and we'd really like to know. It would be, really be helpful to know ahead of time what we're looking at and get a good feeling about it, so that we all can be on the same sheet of music. I really appreciate your time and effort. Thank you.
Yep, the.
Carol?
Go ahead, Carol, come back. Carol?
Can you sign in, please, on that sheet of paper on the stand?
I'm sorry?
Can you write your name and address on that sheet of paper?
Sure.
Thank you.
questions. Anybody else care to, uh, comment on this? Please come forward, sign your name, state your name, and your address.
Sorry I've taken long. I don't have my glasses.
Right, we're head, we're ahead of schedule, so.
Um, my name is Sarah Rimple, and I also live at twenty-two-ten Casement, which I find it funny that you're calling that like the wasted land, um, but, you know, one person's waste is another one's treasure, right? This is lovely land, and it, it, like, just to drive by and look at it, it looks like scrap land, like there, it isn't developed. It, when we moved in, it was a farmland. The people who owned it had, um, inherited it, and the, in their inheritance, um, the main thing was they would not develop it. And so for years, it has sat, um, empty, and it's, you know, we've been able to enjoy that. They, um, you know, in the summer, when you go out to the, you know, to the back, it's, it's hot. You know, like, in, by our house, it's hot, but you go into the back, and it's, you get that breeze, and it's, you know, it's, it's wonderful land. It is not wasteland. And, um, so what I would like, I, what I would also like to say is, this, pro, this, this development has been going on for like, you know, the information that we've been getting has been going on for at least a year, if not a year, uh, if not longer. And we got a, okay, we're going to put this into high residency. Well, it was, um, sixteen duplexes, um, packed, so that's packed. Um, and if you, it's, it's, yes, it's five acres, but that, you know, you put a street through, um, you put proper, um, drainage in, you put, um, like, people who buy houses, they want yards, and they want to be able to use their yards for gardens, for playing. These are families who will, you know, you want families to come in, um, you know, and be affordable. And I understand that, um, you know, building materials have just skyrocketed. And so, two-hundred-thousand dollars for a house, with people who are working, um, not making that much money, that's almost unaffordable. And that's what, even with high-residency buildings, it's going to be two-hundred-thousand dollars, which I know is like the going rate, and you know, all of that right now, but it's just, to me, unaffordable for, for people who are low resident, you know, are, excuse me, low-income. But, um, I, I am asking you to please keep it low-residency, do not make it high-residency. Traffic is terrible, and they have done traffic studies, and I find it funny, because they put the, what I see as the traffic study that they've done is like a speed, a speed thing, and, um, people go the speed limit when they see that. But they fly down Casement at sixty miles an hour. They go down Casement forty miles an hour in the school zone when school is going out. Something is going to have to be done about that, and even if it's only three hundred, you know, cars, it's going to be more than that. Um, people pack themselves in, especially if, you know, um, I work at the high school, there are kids who, um, you know, live in packed houses. Like, they, they don't have rooms to sleep in because it's so packed, so, um, people will not, you know, like, they... People need space, I guess I'm saying, so please keep this low-residency. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else, uh? Scott?
Scott Seal, seventy-eight-hundred Washington Boulevard. Um, I also serve on the Workforce Housing Steering Committee for the City of Manhattan. Um, this is an issue that's, uh, very, uh, very important to me, and something that I'm very passionate about. And I don't want to rehash too much of what's already been said tonight. I think, um, a lot, a lot of good points have been made, and I think, I d- I don't, certainly don't want to make light of the neighborhood concerns, because I think that they're very valid. But not only do I think it's accurate to say that, um, this is not the point in the process to be addressing that, as, as several commissioners have already pointed out, that when we get, if and when a specific proposal comes before the commission, that's when, absolutely, I believe it's the city's responsibility to say, if you're going to develop this, we need to make sure that you're actually going to solve this problem before we can go down that road. But what I think is important to point out is, the owners, I, I don't know for sure how long have it's owned, but it's, it's been like this for a long time. And the reason for that, I suspect, is that as a single, as single-family properties, it's just not financially feasible to be developed, because the costs, construction costs are so high, that as single-family properties, it just doesn't make sense. So the problems that exist right now with stormwater drainage will continue to exist in perpetuity unless we make this zoning change. And then, when, by increasing the density slightly, only up to RLA, not to RM, but one level up, we increase the financial feasibility of a development project there, which will allow a developer to solve that problem. And if we don't change the zoning, it's going to continue to sit exactly as it is right now, and that water problem is not going to go away. So, um, the water problems, the issues with traffic, very valid concerns. In my mind, this is actually the path to solving those, because we can ma- we can get something happening with it, instead of just it sitting there and nothing happening with it. Obviously, I think everybody agrees that we have an affordable housing and a workforce housing problem in this community. Um, I think we also know that we have a lack of land problem in this community. So when we have an opportunity where we have land available that we can get units in, I, for one, believe that we should take advantage of that, but obviously do it smartly and do it responsibly, so that the legitimate concerns of the neighborhood are heard and addressed, but we can still provide, uh, uh, quality, safe, and affordable workforce housing, um, for our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. That was a great summary of what we all need to know. Anybody else care to, uh, comment? All right, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Yeah, the, the, the great point you made is the fact that all we're doing is the rezoning, uh, whatever, there's, the reason you don't know what, what's going to go there is, they haven't decided what's going to go there, because they're not sure what they can pencil out and make work. And so Josh, if I get off track, uh, be sure to chime in here, but yeah, it looks like, at this point, if, if they can get it upzoned to the RLA, then they're going to... then they're gonna try to throw in some streets and put some houses together, figure out how much that's gonna cost and everything. And if it pencils out, and you can probably get some grants and various things like that, uh, it'll happen. And, and that's when the, the city can kind of enforce the no more runoff, hopefully solve some of the old runoff problems, and, uh, not create any more problems. Is that pretty accurate, Josh?
Uh, that's correct, and, and, and it's, I mean, I'll be fully transparent as I, as I was. I had a conversation with, uh, Mr. Rempel last night, and I was, you know, fully transparent that this, this project, even with an RLA, uh, zoning, is very, very difficult to ma- to make work financially. The cost of infrastructure is, is very high. Um, I know that that is, you know, the issue, why you do not see duplexes on that property currently, as Mr. Abbott had tried previously. Uh, the development costs are just too high. So, you're right, uh, with a new zoning, we would, we would, you know, try to resolve that problem, uh, look at the cost of infrastructure, look at the cost of housing units, and, uh, and see if it pencils out, and then we have to raise a boatload of money to make it happen. But we, we sure want to try.
And so Jason, part of the, uh, that drainage thing probably behind the houses on Cop that is three foot wide, two inches deep, that's probably one of those, stormwater detention things that's, one of those one hundred and fifty things that hasn't been maintained like it should have, and we're gonna hopefully start addressing, perhaps?
Possibly. Stephanie might be able to jump in here and give a little bit more detail. I haven't been in a lot of the staff meetings about the site. That area has a lot of history and a lot of, uh, events that have impacted it. A localized little det- drainage ditch i- is probably not gonna solve a lot of their bigger issues, but as far as what Josh and the developers are gonna be able to do on the site, i- it's obviously gonna be better than what it is today, more than likely. Stephanie, did you guys talk about this in staff in terms of anything on site that would be ne- necessary from a storm drainage perspective?
No, other than some sort of detention is likely going to need to occur. Um, I do think it's important to point out that they aren't, developing this is not gonna solve all the existing issues in the neighborhood. They just can't exacerbate the issue any, the, the problem any further. As far as the, the drainage, um, I don't know what we want to call it, uh, there, just south of Cop, we haven't polled the plat for that subdivision to see if it truly is a drainage easement or, um, the status of that. That is something that we can do and provide you all an update, um, or it, um, whatever you choose. It's just not something we've looked at since it wasn't related back to this specific rezoning request.
Okay.
Well, it isn't a solution for the future. It may have been when, for largely low-density development, and it's been twenty years, and mostly people are saying it doesn't work. So I'd hope that that isn't something that you would bring back, when the time, when the time comes, and we're talking future because we don't even know what the proposal will look like.
What's the story of that long north-south, uh, property that's T-bones, makes a T? Is that another one of those really long lots that opens up onto Knox Lane down there, probably?
House landing.
Uh, yeah, it is, so-
To the west, that-
It's a single-family home that has, uh, direct access onto Knox Lane. So yeah, it is a very long piano key lot as well.
So it's not a wasteland. It's, it's land that we can't develop, and now, if they're gonna try to do something else, my point was, if we're gonna try to do something else in the area, and you guys wanted to get rid of that, that would be a good time to do it. But apparently, you want to keep it, and I understand that. I got forty acres up by Randolph. Someday, I'm gonna move up there because I want some space, too. And so it's sure, I understand, want more space. Yeah, the problem is, is, yeah, if you have ten buildings on four acres, that drives the cost of, the cost of land is less than five buildings on four acres, and then, then you can't even make it even remotely affordable at that point. So what other questions, commissioners, you have for anybody? Or would like to make a motion, and then we'll address this again if they can come up with a plan.
Yeah, I just want to comment. I guess, you know, we've got, uh, one individual that spoke. I guess you, you own about three-quarters of, uh, the property that borders the northern piece of this, correct?
Yes.
And then you spoke, and I, I don't know exactly, whi- which piece of that land do you actually own?
I have the piece that is adjacent to Casement.
Yep, I, I get that one, but, but the other one, is that the, the T-bone slot or-
Well, she's down here somewhere.
But it goes all the way up and touches-
No, you don't have that big piece of land that goes- You do have the big piece of land. Okay, so she's got that one, okay.
All right. And then there was the third person that spoke, and I'm, I wanted to identify-
She was, that's husband, wife.
Okay, husband, wife, got it.
And I was able to look this up, the, off of Cop Drive. According to the plat on Riley County GIS, that is supposed to be, it looks like an eight-foot drainage and utility easement along there. So that's something that we can look into.
Well, I think Mr. Rempel's right, the right, adjacent to his is like a two-foot concrete drain that, uh, is, yeah, and pointed down, so it'll drain, true, but-
Uh, it's broken on the end, on the drain.
Okay, I don't know that. Okay. So it backs water up? Okay.
Okay, so that, okay, I got that. And then the other question, Stephanie, because, you know, I know you mentioned it, but right now, the way it's zoned, what's the maximum amount of properties that could be put there?
We're guessing if it was single-family, it would be approximately twenty-two. Uh, the way we did that was some pretty rough math to, to allocate, some, uh, street right-of-way, and then looking at the minimum lot size that's required per each single-family lot. So, uh, roughly twenty-two houses.
So that's the max that you go there if we don't rezon it?
Correct.
And then if it's rezoned, what's the max?
Yeah, that, again, is gonna be a little bit, a little tricky. Um, if it was five-unit townhomes, which would get you the most dwelling units per acre, there would be around, um-
Forty-eight, it says in the staff report.
I think that was right. So there would be nine structures, um, at most. So forty-eight, yeah, you could have forty-eight dwelling units. Again, that's gonna come back to the amount of square footage you have to have for each of those dwelling units.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out the window. I, I understand it'd probably be more than twenty-two and less than forty-eight, depending on how you, how you park that in there. But, uh, that just gives me a, a better window of what, uh, what that is.
All right, any other questions, or someone want to make a motion?
I just want to clarify one other thing. Now, most of these rezonings, if, you know, and I've said this over the past ten years, so I guess I'll say it again. If the people that have joined the property, you know, immediately to it, disagree with the rezoning, I generally don't vote for it. And I, and I said that back in two thousand and eleven because I'm pretty firm on that. When you, when you buy a piece of property, you, you know what the zoning is next to it, and you don't expect it to be changed unless you agree with it. And, and there's two folks that have adjoining property that don't agree with it. So that sort of tells you where I'm gonna vote. But I also agree with, you know, Scott, I mean, this is a great opportunity for the workforce housing, and maybe it'll work there, but, but then you weigh the traffic, it's in the floodplain. Uh, there's, there's some other issues there, so I just, uh, you know, philosophically, I have to side with the property owners, but, but, but again, I, I feel bad about that on the workforce end of it because I'm a hundred percent for that also, but it, but if you got a couple folks that, uh, that don't agree with it, I'm, I'm gonna have to side with them.
I would just, um, I'd say, I, I think part of our job as, as commission is to keep projects sort of moving forward until they collapse under their own weight, or they, they realize that it won't pencil out, it won't cash flow, it won't, it doesn't make any sense to do it, so. I, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion so we can, those guys can keep trying to figure out some way to make it work, and then when they, they come back with a, if they can come back with something that might work, then we'll just have to make sure that we, we try to be as sensitive as possible to the neighbors. So with that, I would move that we approve the first reading of an ordinance, rezoning four-point-seven-seven acre tract of land generally located north of the intersection of Casement and Knox Lane from low-density to low-density residential attached, based on the findings in the staff report and recommendation by the Urban Area Planning Board. Is there a second?
I'm willing to second it. I just, I don't want us cutting a lot of corners, making a lot of, uh, concessions. I, I want this development to, you know, respect both the property and the surrounding neighbors. But I am hopeful that, you know, we ask, uh, the community and the builders here to, uh, apply for some of the housing money that's available through the State Department of Commerce. Other communities have gotten, Oldsburg, for heaven's sake, got fifteen housing units. They got, uh, money for that. And so we are under a lot of pressure, and our, our housing is going further and further away from our community, as evidenced by the Potawatomi County, aggressive development over there. And so it's important that we have housing here in Manhattan, and it's important that we have affordable housing for people without public housing, which is what you get involved in. Because public housing is dense. You think of Prairie Glen, think of the high-rise downtown. And, uh, so that's one kind of extreme, anyway, or five, seven, eight-story apartment buildings. But I'd like to, uh, I, I'm, I'd like, I, I, I respect the Habitat for Humanity, uh, as an organization, and I'd like to see what they can come up with with regard to developing this property because I think they're usually respectful of, uh, and not as assertive as some other developers might be, not as aggressive as some others might be. But I am, uh, gonna be watchful about drainage, and, um, so, uh, anyway, I will second the motion to move it on because of the housing needs. I, I know that Northview and this property is not going to solve the housing needs of Manhattan. And we need it for, we need to solve it across the board in this community, and not just on one side of town. So I'm anxious for other si- other parts of the community to step up. And we haven't seen that all year long, just nothing's come up. That has been, uh, a really good solution. Most of the development is on the west side, and they want concessions because, oh, the limestone is too hard to drill through and that, you know, or it's on a hill, whatever. So, uh, the whole community has to step up for this.
Yeah, I'm also on the Workforce Housing Group, and we've looked at a lot of these issues, and a lot of the developments that are gonna come up are gonna have some sort of zoning involved. So we're gonna have to be taking on this issue over and over again. As part of that group, um, one of the exercises we went through was to, because we have this workforce housing money to use, and said, how would you use that, um, money? And I think I put at least half of it, when I picked where to do, was it a way to work with neighborhoods that maybe had some issues with the development we wanted to do, to try to come up with some ways to make it palatable or some incentives? And at the time, I said it might be a pocket park, it might be some green space to go with it. I think this is a good example of where we have a drainage issue. It was already said, the developer can't make it worse, but doesn't necessarily have to make it better. So I think this is like a prime example to get something in for workforce housing. What can we do to the neighbor, for the neighborhood to make up for some of that? Some, to use some of that money to maybe go that little extra for the drainage or for some of these other issues to take care of them? And I'd just like to, you know, I'll vote for approval, but I'd like to see us, if something happens, follow through and do that, so we can set some examples of what we're willing to do to get this workforce housing to be a reality.
Very good. Please call the roll, then.
Commissioner Butler?
No.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries, three to one.
All right, that is the last of the agenda for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, before we adjourn, I think there's a class here this evening. Who could, uh, just speak to what class it is, I, from case eight?
Send forward your leader.
What is your class? Tell us more.
You somehow seem familiar. I'm not sure if you've been here before.
Hello, Commission. Um, I speak on behalf of our planning, uh, professional practice class. Um, we got to see this, um, back when it was passed on the fourteenth. So it's good to see some follow-through with this type of, um, project, so. We thank you so much for having us. Um, do I need to sign in?
No. Are you guys juniors, seniors, uh, almost ready to start? I'm, just barely started or almost finished with-
We are, we are fifth-year, um, students, some of it, and this is our last fall semester for most of us. Um, most of us will be continuing on with our education in the spring and looking to, um, go in the professional field here in the summer, so. Uh, we're right here at the very end, and, and so it's good to see some of these things in action. And like I said, we thank you so much for having us again here today.
You're welcome.
Go out and look, go out and look at the, look at the area, too. That would, uh, help, I help you make, help it make sense.
Right, without trespassing.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
All right, you're welcome anytime. All right, motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the October third, twenty twenty-three city commission meeting.
A second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn, please call the roll.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries, four to, four to zero.
All right, motion passed, meeting adjourned.